Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
So we're just kind of getting in the whole swing of starting up. I usually like wait like a minute or two, just to give people who are running late time to get in. So. So how was looking through all this material yesterday? Did you get a chance? I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen.
Yeah, I don't know about Karthik, but unfortunately I must admit that I had some medical appointments. I couldn't really be very productive sadly, but.
It's okay.
Yeah.
That's okay. I expect that. I mean, you know, even in just thinking about like myself, you know, as much as I wanted to like get some stuff done on yesterday, like, you know, reality kicks in and you have to like just go with the flow. And so I think like for the most part, it's kind of just attempted like one problem here. My goal is like, oh, I hope I'm not slacking compared to like other people who might be like doing all of them or something like that. But no, it's a, I think like it's still too early for any of that, right? We gotta go through most of this material. So.
Yeah, my, I don't know about preferences. I was thinking, will we have more time to study if it's like Monday, Wednesday, Friday versus Monday, Tuesday? I don't know.
Well, yeah. I think like if we do Wednesday and Friday, we'll have to just do it a little bit later because we have the system design group. You know, that is at 7:30. So from 7:30 to usually like 8:30, we do system design. And then like I was thinking of squeezing in 30 minutes for DSA there. So 8:30 to 9.
Yeah, it will work for me since I'm gonna should be on full leave, but I don't know about Karthik. I think he might be more busy. I don't know.
I think Karthik mentioned to me that he's going to just be listening because he's hanging out with his kids and I guess. So, you know, I think like we can, we can be very flexible on this. So I can communicate that to this group. You know, via the different chats that we have and see what people say. And I'm okay if we want to reduce the amount of times meet. You know, and make it like a certain flow, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, if that's fine. Like I think a minimum three days would be okay.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good idea.
Okay, so that's what we'll do. So today, then I won't keep you very long. I'm just gonna go through like a quick rundown of stuff. And then we can kind of meet up tomorrow as well. And then we can just skip Thursday and we can try Friday. So. Will that work for you?
Sure, sure. For me, definitely.
Okay. All right. So how do you feel about line 75 and big O at this time? Did you have a chance to go through? Any of this stuff?
Not in depth, but I don't know if you've taken a look at the new six double O six of MIT course. So they're also providing some very similar and good type of cheat sheets for different, you know, data structures. And also for different, you know, algorithms, sorting algorithms and so on. So.
You have a link by any chance?
Yes, yes, I can share that with you.
Okay.
It's basically the course that you're looking at. I think that's the older version of the same course. Now they have divided that mostly in two courses. One is the intro to algorithms. The latest one that they had in 2020, I'm following that. And also analysis of algorithms, if I'm not mistaken, something like that. But the intro one, if we look at the lecture notes, they have some very interesting, you know, tables per lecture and they have organized lectures per different data structure or different algorithms that they're using. So quite interesting to me.
Okay. All right. Wow. Very good. Very good. So this stuff right here, right? Course review notes?
Yes, yes, exactly. And then there, for instance, they are dividing the data structures into sequence and set data structures. And then for operations, of course, there's some dynamic operations, static operations. They're separating this and then four different sequence or set data structure. They're explaining what is the, you know, amount of time or complexity of the operation that is needed for each of those static or dynamic operations. I think the tables that they're providing, they're quite interesting and because they're also adding some in-depth intro to different data structures. I quite like that. And I find, you know, I really like the old version of the six double O six. The one that you're mostly looking at and referring to, for instance, the lecture number three of that course. I think it's very helpful also and important to take a look at because they're talking about that master method. And how to analyze complexities of algorithms, mostly recursive ones.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah.
That one is also very key.
Okay, I'm gonna grab this. And I'm gonna put this in our sheet as well. Okay. This is good. Thank you for sharing this. It's great.
No worries. Yeah, I like it a lot. It's something that, you know, we can forget it very easily. At most.
Yeah.
Review.
Okay, so this is good. I think I'll take a look at it today. Feel free, you know, to just ping me like during the day or whatever. Do you have Discord yet? Did you were able to get?
Yes, yes. I have it on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, just ping me like whenever you can about like, you know, any of these videos, just your thoughts. I think like what we can do is like, I'm trying to get people to just discuss here like on the DS algorithms channel. So, you know, if you wanna like just kind of watch a video and then kind of share some notes or thoughts, that would be like the best way. And then we can kind of just have like a mini discussion here, as well as we can bring it up in these kind of discussions as well.
Definitely. I should do today, probably, you know, going quickly through some of these tables and also trying to see if I can solve some of those big O problems of cracking the coding interview. I think they have some good big O exercises. I don't think, I'm not sure about that. I haven't seen only big O focused type of exercises on code. Maybe I'm wrong. But mostly they're talking about what they're looking for in the developed algorithm rather than, you know, ask us to do the analysis of one operation, you know, data structure and algorithm.
Sure, sure. Okay, all right. So. So I guess at this point, we're still kind of going through, you know, the basics here. So you, you got the Discord, which is good. Were you able to kind of figure out this? I think I might need to add you to our repo first. Do you have GitHub?
Yes, I do have GitHub. I can share my ID or email address that I use for the accounts with you.
All right, let me just put this to the side here. And then, yeah, go ahead and send me a message.
So this is my ID and the email that I'm using. It's my Gmail.
All you have to do is just basically accept the invite. And then you should be able to join this repo right here, the DSA one. And then basically, you know, like I mentioned yesterday, the main thing is to try to like make a pull request to this repo after cloning it. Looks like Karthik did one, which is pretty good. And so here he's just sending me like the brute force implementation for the two sum here, which is great. So we could review this if we want.
Right.
So same thing, same idea, maybe just send a PR with your version. The way that I think he did it here is, which is good, is that he did blind 75 arrays, easy to sum, right? And so he put it under a Java folder, which is fine. And then like we'll just have to worry about like how like all of that gets put together in this repo. So I might have him like put his name in front of like the folder. Somewhere here. So we can just kind of know like, okay, this is Karthik. And then like that can be added to the repo. Yeah, I mean, this is kind of like the basic idea here anyway, right? Like so. You know, he defined his class in Java, and I think that was kind of like the next thing we wanted to get a sense of here. What languages are people like fine with? And it looks like the winner is probably JavaScript, which is funny because I don't want to use JavaScript for lead code and stuff like that because I don't feel like it's that good of a language. But then runner up is Python, which is pretty good. And then let's see here, C++. And then, then Java and then other stuff. So I think like we can kind of go along with Python, Java or C++. And then of course JavaScript is supportive. So I think any of these four languages are okay. Java, because we already have it. And then I think Python, because you like Python, right? I was gonna ask about C++. I felt like the reason I was interested in C++ is because it's like the closest to working with the real machine. And so you have to worry about things like pointers and, you know, references and heaps and stacks and stuff like that, whereas in like other languages, you don't really worry about it. But maybe that might make things too complicated. So I'm okay. I was just kind of curious, like, if you start working with this kind of language, right? You're closer to the machines. You're more careful about like the memory you use. And like the, you know, the algorithms you work on. But that said, the syntax could be kind of like hard to read sometimes, I think. So what are your thoughts? I guess Karthik, if you have, if you want to just like put in the chat, you can do that too, if you have the capacity to do that. And I'm just looking at the chat.
Yeah, I didn't add a main method. I tested it locally, but I removed it for people to play around and, you know.
Okay, that's okay. I was just curious, like maybe you might want to add a main method, just so we can like easily test this.
Yeah, I'll add.
And then the other comment that I was gonna leave for you was, if you can put this in a folder with your name at the root. That way, like we know, okay, it's coming from you. I know, like you're merging it to the main repo, but like we'll probably have many different types of two sums. So I would like, like your folder, then my folder, then Hanya's folder and so on. If that makes sense.
Yeah, initially I thought about it, like if we keep everybody's solution separately for two some, then we'll have to go dig around. Try to see everything. That's why I named it brute force and different name. If we can add in the same class with different method signatures, then we can, we can actually see everything one shot. You know what I mean?
Okay.
Once we start, more contributors are gonna do, it's gonna cut in different folder structures, right? Packages. So that's why I was thinking and I left it that way. But yeah, I'm totally open. What are you suggesting?
Okay, but yeah, I think that's fine. Then maybe I'll just change my comment here, then I'll probably just say, please add a main method. Then I'll, I'll also work on this as well. Um, that's fine. So I think, let's see here. So I'll read out this, like, I guess we could talk about the implementation, right? So you have O M plus and time complexity. So for every loop and time complexity, maybe, do you want to explain this if you have the capacity to do that?
The first one brute force, let me quickly do that. Basically, what I was doing is, you know, the input array, the first element of the input array, the idea was like the question, if you go back to the read me, maybe I should like move the the question here itself. If you go, so it's more important first to look at the actual problem itself. Before we come here, if you go to the reading, I just added the problem there.
Oh, okay. Sure. Let me go over to the. On the, the main code over here?
Yeah, in my branch. Oh, maybe I just didn't push. Anyways, nonetheless, I think like it needs to be moved into the class itself, each problem. So people, so the idea is like, you know, you have a list of arrays, input arrays. Let's say it does two, yeah, two, seven, that's the input array, 11 and 15, and we want to achieve the target of nine. Right? However, you want to do it, I traded and find the indexes of those two numbers, which is gonna, the sum is gonna be nine, right? So what I did is like in the brute force, I took the array, I traded the first time. So the first element would be two because it starts from zero in Java. So the first element is two. And then what I did is like I created another for loop, which is gonna increment the loop. Let's say if i is zero, the j would be one. The j is one. So I just constantly kept checking if i, i the element, which is the first element and i plus one the element, j's element, which is the next element, together, the sum is equals to the target. If it is, then return the new index. So that's what I did in the brute force.
Hmm, okay.
I don't know, Vijay, we are not seeing your screen, whatever it is, but maybe you're opening it in a different monitor, the actual brute force solution. But yeah, that's what I was trying to do here. Whereby, yeah, now we can see. So I was just iterating over it and then checking whether that's equal to target. If it is, like I would send the, you know, index of those elements. That's the idea, right? We need to be sending the index. If not, it will just return zero. The minute it hits that particular target, it's gonna return I N J. This is more of a brute force. The reason the complexity of this is M plus N, because there are two for loops, right?
Right.
Time complexity, there is no space complexity because I'm not using any objects or sorts. But essentially this is O of 2N, which is denoted as O of N, because this is linear, not quadratic, right? It's not N to the power two. So this is a brute force version. Generally, when I approach a problem, I try my best to do the brute force. Just get the functionality out and then again try different things. So the second was second was a tad bit faster when I input and record, but it used a little bit of space because I use hash maps. So the second solution, what I was trying to do is like, let's again, I'm doing a for loop here, right? I trading over the elements. Let's forget the if part for now. Let's go to the next line where I put into the map. I say, okay, target is nine. So the first element is two. What I'm going to do is like I'm adding the key S seven and the index of that particular element, right? Which is zero here. Because two, so seven is added. So what I did in the previous, the first iteration, I will come and add this. And the second iteration, when it goes, seven comes. So I'm checking in the if loop. If the map already has seven, which is what we did, right? When we subtracted the seven was the key. If it already has seven, then obviously this matches the criteria, right? So what I did is I returned the map and, and the actual element, because if you push in the seven key, the value of was the previous index, right? So I'm passing the previous index zero and one. So this is pretty much same, just that it uses a hash map implementation to do that. If you.
Right, right. So this, this version basically pushes values as keys, right? And then the the value of the, so it almost looks like this, right? So when you're making like a hash map, the entry is like two, right? And then the index is the value. And then the next key is, you know, the value that we have here. And then its value in the index is one, right? And so on. And then you're just kind of going through and you're saying, okay, if map contains key, then return, get, oh, I see. Like, so you, did you do it the other way around? I think you're kind of like, did you put?
I did the other way around. So what I did, if you notice in the map dot put, what I did is like I subtracted the target, the key is seven. Right now, the first target is nine, right? The first element is two. So what I did is I subtracted from the target and put it as the key. So here it'll input a seven. And, and it will, because I already subtracted it, I add that particular index zero, right? Two index there in the map. So what I'm doing in the next for loop is checking whether seven already exists in the next iteration somewhere along the line.
Right.
If seven does exist, so that, that index, right, which is one, all I'm doing is I'm adding the one in the end. And then actually I'm getting the actual number, right? Seven. Because which is what the map has, the map's actual values, the index of the first element. So I'm just getting it and reshuffling it. Does it make sense?
Yeah, yeah, it makes sense.
Actually, it's nine minus two, when I'm putting nine minus two, right? The first element is comma zero, right? So the next iteration, what happens is it comes and checks whether seven exists. Right? I of, because the next iteration, I second, I of one is seven, right? It comes and checks, oh, seven exists in the map. Yes, it does. If it does, then it already equates to whatever that minus, right? Computation. So I'm like, okay, this index is also correct. So I'm adding that index, which is one in the end. And then I'm getting the previous index, seventh index, right? Which is zero. So zero and one, I'm just passing it out.
Got it. Okay, so let's go ahead and add a main method for this. And then we can go ahead and try this out. Okay.
Honey, for sake of the discussion, it's pretty much hash map. I'm sure you know, it's, it's total and Python. So it can be actually the same way. And for loops is pretty much same for you from brute force perspective.
Yes.
Okay, any, what do you think, Hanya? Did you feel like you got this?
Well, honestly, my main focus, I'm only focused so far as been on Python. And the main reason is that I'm trying to mostly focus on ML engineer slash, you know, data cycle growth. But those roles mostly Python is the main language. But yeah, the logic is basically the same as, you know, what we want to do in Python. And in Python, for instance, I'm for the hash map, I'm using a dictionary. Yeah, and yeah, more or less doing the same thing. Not the brute force one, but the second approach that Karthik mentioned.
Okay, so you were, you were doing this version to?
Yes. So adding the differences, yeah, adding the difference to the hash map and then verifying if you know, we, something that we are looking for is in the hash map or not.
Right, right, right. So the hash map is better because, you know, it essentially it essentially runs through this faster. The problem with something like brute force is that you have this double for loop that goes through, right? And it, even though it's not O of N squared, right? It could be, you know, it could take twice as long essentially to iterate, especially if you have like millions of records, right? And so like that's where, you know, like with these smaller arrays, right? It's, it's not a problem to do like a double for loop. But when you have large loops, right, then, or large inputs, then it just becomes something that you have to iterate through a lot longer. And so even O N is kind of, you know, it takes time, but computers can do a really good job, at least with O N complexity. And I think like when you try to, when we try to like solve these problems, we try to like do the best we can to get it as close to, you know, either O N or O log N or O one, you know, as a solution, anything above O N squared is considered not optimal. So that would be like sort of review from this sheet over here, right? Like this graph here. You're kind of shooting for this range. You know, and O N, N squared is like, it's acceptable, but it's called suboptimal. And then you never really want to hit anything up here with your algorithm. You just want to recognize if an algorithm could be this, like O N factorial or to the two and exponential, right? But like our range for shooting should be down here. So with arrays, like typically, you know, going through an array for searching for numbers is O N. So that should give you a clue sometimes, like if you have to like search for some number. Like in the add formula that we had here. You know, it is going to take time to get that number, as you can see over here with this brute force solution. If we just kind of did, you know, like, let's take the first number here and then like add it to the next number. You know, and see, does that add up to the target? In this case it does. But here, if you do three plus two, it doesn't add up to six. So then you have to do another combination. So you might do three plus four and keep the one index on here and the other index going to the next, right? So three plus four doesn't equal seven, it doesn't equal six, it equals seven. So now you have to go to two. And then you're gonna go to the four and then you're gonna get two to six. But see, like you've already gone through this array, like many iterations, right? At least the length of the array. And this array is probably smaller, right? So you know, it's, it's O M plus N complexity here. So but the, this solution where we don't add anything to the target, I mean, add anything to the one index to another index or subtract the target from one index and search for the other index. If we do something more simple. Um, if we do something more simple like this, where we use a hash map, then essentially we can save ourselves the effort of going and trying to find that key again, cuz hash map has O one access retrieval, which is pretty cool, right? So, um, and eh when you think hash map, just think again, still just simple array, because like it's um, it's backed by an array in most cases, but you can, you can refer to this as well, right? Like, um search is O one, insertion is O one, deletion is O one. Worst case could be O of N, and that's just because like if there are many collisions in the hash table or the hash table is not very optimized, then um you have to uh just kind of redo this hash table essentially.
Yeah, and for instance, I'm using uh enumerate in Python for the list of numbers to get, you know, uh index value uh combination for the hash map. And then I think for operations like this, I need to go and analyze, okay, what is complexity of enumerate in Python and how it does that. It seems um mostly at constant time. But uh, yeah, for such operations, I think we need to go beyond data structures and see how some of those uh operations are defined in each language.
Right. Um, so, okay, I think for today, we're already at eight oh six, so we did a good job. I think we kind of went through, um, you know, some of the review. Um, got, again, like, you're added NASA's repo. Um, and then we have like, kind of like a a format we're going with. So I think, um, and then we finally discussed a problem. So I think like uh the next step would be just like for other people, including myself, to push up a solution as well. Um, so, one way you could do it is write it in the language you want. So maybe I'll push up a C++ solution or a JavaScript one. Um, and if you wanna do a Python one, you can, Hanya. Um, and then we can also go on to the next um question from blind seventy-five. And um, you know, like, as we go through these just, you know, think about it for the whole day. If it's difficult, don't worry. I'm gonna try to like do this pace where it's more like once every uh, like, we'll meet up three times a week. Um. Just kind of go through the next one, make a P R. Um, and then, you know, like if stuff gets complicated, just, you know, um, send a message and let us know. And we can review some of that the next day. Um, as well as, you know, we can go over just kind of like the notes itself, like, so if you watch anything or if you see anything interesting, we can talk about it as well. All right, um, so I think we're good. Any other thoughts or questions before we sign off today?
Uh, not from my side. So we discussed, we're gonna have Monday, Wednesday, Fridays, right?
Yeah.
And it says, when, Wednesday is gonna be later a little bit, right?
Mm-hmm. So come around, I would say, uh, eight thirty or eight fifteen. Um. You know, and uh I should have like a call that, so I'll go ahead and set that up on Zoom. Um, and I'll have it start right after the system design one. Um. Or you're welcome to just join the system design one, and I can send you a link for that as well. And then, you know, you can just kind of um, hang on the last few minutes and then I can transition over to a new Zoom.
Sure, uh, I gonna, uh, when will the system design one start usually?
Um, it starts at seven thirty. So if you do wanna join system design, join it at seven thirty.
Yeah, I gonna look into agenda and the uh plan for that before uh, you know, committing to anything.
Of course, yeah. Let me um give you the track, so you can see the system design group if you want. Um, let me put that in the chat here. That way, you know, you can save this if you want. Um, we're kind of, yeah, we're on chapter three at this point. Um, okay, yeah. So the, so the basic recap here is just um continue to do the review. Read through these, you know, basic things that we're doing um this first month. Um, you know, big O notation, um, the language stuff, let's continue to figure out. Um, so C++ JavaScript and Python, I think these are gonna be the main languages we work with. Um, and then review arrays for now. I would say like that's where our head is at. Um, and then just focus on these questions and make some P Rs, so we can talk about it in the coming days.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Karthik, too. See you uh Wednesday. Bye.
Bye.